Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. In these challenging and troubling times, we ask humbly and sincerely to be guided from death to life, from violence to peace, from falsehood to truth, from fear to trust, and from despair to hope. Let peace fill our hearts, our world, and our universe. Let us dream together, pray together, and work together to build one world of peace and justice for all. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of June the 18th, 2025 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 is presented as at this time. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion has been presented for consideration. What's your pleasure? Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to approval of the minutes from the March 19th, 2025 work session and regular session, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 11. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item 11, staff is in receipt of a written request from the applicant to table item 11, rezoning RZN 2024-10 until the August 20, 2025 City Council meeting. Item 11 was previously requested by the applicant to be deferred from the May 21st, 2020 meeting to tonight's meeting. The following are the specifics of that item. An ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from a agricultural zoning district to RC residential compact conditional zoning district for a portion of the property located at 20, at 2,000, 2201 Holland Road, zoning map 33, parcel 113, account number 152525000, RZN 2024-10 conditional. At this time, I would ask City Council's consideration of a motion to remove item 11 from this evening's agenda, and for us to schedule item 11 public hearing for the August 20th, 2025 City Council meeting, and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 11, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicant has requested to continue this item to the August 20th, 2025 City Council meeting. Therefore, a motion would be in order to amend the agenda to defer public hearing item number 11 to the August 20th, 2025 City Council meeting, and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to amend.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Did I get you in there?
I'm fine. Let me make my comment, please, that we accept the consent agenda as presented except for item 11, which we will move to the August 20th meeting. I did not say that.
That too. I said as amended.
Thank you.
Okay. Were you okay with the second?
Still okay with that, yes.
We still got a second. Okay, we've got a motion as amended by Councilmember Johnson in the most eloquent manner. That is now seconded by Councilmember Butler Barlow. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Doeman.
Hearing none, will you please present the consent agenda items for consideration?
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Tidewater Emergency Medical Services Council Incorporated for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number eight, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. And item number nine, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a cost participation agreement with the City of Chesapeake, Virginia for the identification and determination of the boundary line between the cities and all other related documents.
Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview of the items?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item seven, the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue has received $21,971.77 from the Tidewater Emergency Medical Service Council. The funding will be used to purchase medication and supplies to support the Suffolk Fire and Rescue's pharmacy kits. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $21,971.77. There is no local match. In regards to item eight, Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue has received a donation of life-saving whole-blood equipment and supplies valued at $13,435.79 from the Tidewater Emergency Medical Service Council. The donated whole-blood equipment supplies will support the fire and rescue staff in addressing trauma and medical cause in the pre-hospital setting. Adoption of the resolution is necessary to accept and record the donated personal property. In regards to item nine, at your work session today, City Council received a briefing on the proposed realignment of the cities of Suffolk and Chesapeake's boundary within the Pewsville area. Resolution before you authorize the City Manager to execute a cost participation agreement between the cities to split all costs associated with establishment of the proposed boundary. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilmember Williams?
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to public hearings, and we do have quite a few. Our first one is an ordinance to authorize an ingress and egress easement across city property for the benefit of proposed tax map in parcel number 31 asterisk 2B. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Hughes, Deputy City Manager, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, for your consideration is an ordinance to authorize an ingress and egress easement across city property for the benefit of parcel 31*2B. So, want to provide you with a map so you have a better understanding of where this location is. So, shown on your map in red, this is the city-owned property. It was a former rail line going all the way from the center of the city out towards Isle of Wight County. The visionary ownership would include a future multi-use path and potential utility location. Obviously, those are not in use today. Where the star is, is the property that we're going to talk about. So, this is the property for your consideration. What is being proposed here in purple would be an easement that would allow for access back and forth for a proposed home via family transfer on the site. You can see in red, that's that red property owned by the City of Suffolk. This would allow for access from one parcel to the other over the city property, but still protecting the rights in the future if the city were to build a multi-use path or future utilities. I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak? I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time. This ingress egress were allowed by wife and I to build on that piece of land that the assistant manager just described to you guys.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir. My name is Josh Dard, and I'm at 5798 Indian Trail. The property showed on the map there.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here also to answer any questions that you might have on the topic. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Johnson?
Move for approval.
We've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rector?
Second that motion.
We have a second from Councilmember Rector. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next scheduled public hearing was item 11, which has been deferred to August 20th meeting at the request of the applicant. So, we'll move to our next public hearing. Mr. Go, in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved properties from NRGC Phase III of the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development Residential Development for properties located on Brassy Street and Waggle Drive, zoning map 26F. Gets good here. Parcels S*6*4*1, S*6*4*2, S*6*4*3, I'll never say asterisk again. S*6*4*15, S*6*4*16, S*6*4*17, S*6*4*18, S*6*4*19, S*6*4*20, S*6*4*21, and S*6*4*22. 254003557, 254003558, 254003559, 254003147, 254003561, 254003562, 254003563, 254003564, 254003565, 254003566, 254003567, 254003568, 254003569, 254003570, 254003571, 254003572, 254003573, 254003574, 254003575, 254003576, 254003577, 254003578. And this is RZN 2025III conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Meg Pittinger, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I apologize in advance on behalf of the applicant for you having to read all of those numbers, Mr. Mayor, but you did a fantastic job. Although, you might have missed one. Hope not. As the manager said, this is a rezoning request. This property is in the Hillpoint Farms area, and the applicant is requesting an amendment of the previously approved proffered conditions for the section that is known as NRGC Phase III. You can see that it is these 22 parcels that the mayor, whoops, that the mayor just read off. Previously, the subject parcel was part of a conditional rezoning request, RZN 202108, and this would, this proffer amendment would affect just 22 of the total 195 units that are allowed. You had a similar rezoning request, I think, last year with the Terry Peterson Group wanting to amend some of the architectural requirements, and this applicant is requesting basically the same thing with one slight change. They are requesting to remove two of the architectural requirements and then add an additional proffer that are outlined in your proffer number seven there in your staff report. Proffer number seven does indicate that the property shall be subject to the listed architectural controls. So, again, the changes that they're making are only related to the architectural features of the buildings. What they want to remove is number, is 7E, which talks about brick skirting being required around the foundation, and 7J, which talks about the front-loading garages being a minimum of two feet behind the front building plane. The item that they're adding, which I think is significant, is 7Q, which states that the architectural elevation shown in Exhibit C shall be part of the proffer, which means that they are proffering the elevations. You can see here a closer look at the 22 parcels that will be on the new streets of Brassy and Waggle. And they are requesting this proffer amendment so that they can be more flexible in this current environment and offer more options to their customers who want to buy houses. Some people want more features, some people want fewer. This will allow them to have some options that they can offer to people. So, they proffered out a number of elevations that you have in your package. I'm just going to go through a few of them so you can see kind of what they're looking at. You can see there's lots of different fenestrations that they're showing, the alignments of the doors, different roof lines, different materials, but all really nice-looking. So, by amending these proffers, it'll allow them to not be stuck with those proffers that were from before and be able to offer these different options to their customers. Here's another sampling of the options that they want to offer to their, to their customers that are coming in. And you can see here, you know, the amended proffer statement where they're, you know, requesting to remove the two proffers and then add the second proffer, which will proffer, which will proffer the elevations. This item, in accordance with the UDO, comes straight to City Council with no planning commission recommendation because they're not increasing the density or intensity of the use. This is an item that comes straight to City Council. And with that, I will stand by for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of council, City Manager Moore. My name is Vince Napolitano. My address is 1492 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach, Virginia. We are requesting the removal of two proffers previously approved in 2021 as part of the rezoning of NRGC Phase III, and that was part of the Hillpoint Farms community. The proffers we're requesting to be removed are brick skirting and the front-loaded garages being a minimum of two foot behind the front building plane. We've also added proffer 7Q, which you'll see in your packet. It's a variety of elevations, and we are willing to maintain all of those elevations, and those are the only elevations that we'd be able to build with. These proffer amendments do not affect the already-approved number of units. We're not affecting density or any lot sizes from the original rezoning. Furthermore, the modifications only apply to 22 lots, which you so eloquently read each number of, and they were, excuse me, within Phase III. Previously, in February of 2024, another developer within this phase of the community received approval to remove the same two proffers we are requesting be removed. We request that these proffers be eliminated to enable a broader range of options for home buyers that are consistent with evolving consumer preferences and regional housing needs. Our intention is to provide more options while still maintaining the quality and character envisioned in the original development approvals. I appreciate your consideration, and we'll stand by should there be any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Once again, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Wright? We've got a second from Councilmember Wright. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an adult daycare center use on property located at 108 North Main Street, zoning map 34G18A, parcel 268. This is account number 353441500. This is CUP 202423. This item was continued from the May 21st, 25 City Council meeting. Before we open the public hearing, I'd just like to make a statement that make everyone aware. I do own several properties on this block, and even though I do not have a financial interest in the subject property, I will abstain due to possible appearance of any impropriety. I will preside over the public hearing, but will not comment. With that being said, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
I will defer to the City Manager at this time.
I'm sorry. Mr. Manager, provide an overview.
Yes, again, Meg Pittinger, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Meg?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, as, as the mayor indicated, this is a request for a conditional use permit for an adult day center on, this property is on North Main Street. It's in the central growth area on Main Street, not far from the intersection of West Washington Street. This property contains approximately 3,700 square feet building. It was previously a pharmacy, but it is currently vacant. It's been vacant for some time. The applicant proposes the adult daycare use between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with no more than 25 clients and nine staff members. The use will offer activities designed to build skills for individuals with disabilities. Activities will include community engagement, social development, recreational activities, employment, vocational services, educational support, and health and wellness. The applicant has amended its narrative, his narrative from when this went to planning commission to specify that they will only use the front door to access the use as they do not have access through the rear, and so staff has added a recommended condition prohibiting loading and unloading for the use on North Main Street. For this type of use and the size, only one means of ingress is required by the building code, so the one means of ingress in the front here would be sufficient. Again, this is the front of the building. It was previously the super drug right there on North Main Street. This is the interior layout. They will only be using the first floor for this use, so again, it only will require that one means of egress in the front. Planning Commission at their April meeting did vote 7-0 to approve this application with the conditions. Again, this was previously deferred, so this was actually heard at Planning Commission in April. And with that, I will stand by for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Jeffrey Townsend. I'm no, I resigned at 121 Niblet Circle. I'm the owner of 108 North Main Street. I also own several buildings on downtown Suffolk. My wife and her brother and myself decided to do a day support. It's a need for here in Suffolk. So, my job is just to provide a better need to keep people in Suffolk. My wife, come over here. My wife don't want to speak. We bought the building back in 2024. The building been vacant for almost two, three years. We did a lot of interior work to it. It took me about five months to do it. The building originally was rented out to another day support, but it took so long to get to City Council. So, he, he said, "Okay, I don't want it." So, I said, "I'm gonna continue with the original plan to do a day support." So I said, I'm going to continue with the original plan to do a day support. I still got the time and still got the desire to do more work in City Suffolk. So if you have any questions, my name is Jeffrey Townsend. I'll be here.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Manager, and City Council members. I and my sister are sole proprietors to the adult day center that is being proposed today, and I myself have been a director within the mental health industry for some time, and I understand the need. I've been into these.
Sir, excuse me, can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Zenny McNeely. I'm at 13161 Stockley Drive, Chester, Virginia. And so I've been really intimately involved in the mental health industry and in this particular sort of, this particular sort of thing, and I believe that there is a significant need within the community because I believe homelessness is a direct correlation to mental health, and mental health is a direct correlation to homelessness. I believe if we could start to help people to understand and to build those life skills, then we can sort of change the trajectory of what we see within the community and help people to move to the next phase of their lives to be better. So I hope that this council can see us as an asset to the community, and we wish a vote today.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. Renee Townsend, 121 Niblick Circle in Suffolk, Virginia, 23434. I am one of the owners of 108 North Main Street, and I'm proposing the daycare center. And I did a little statistic that I just watched. So on June 9th, I watched Cecilia Boutique at 126 North Main Street. She had 15 people coming to her establishment, and 14 of those 15 people appeared to be elderly or disabled. My Olive had 115 people come into their establishment on June 10th, which is located 115 North Main Street, and out of those 115 people, 75 appeared to be elderly or disabled. And then I watched Baron's Pub, and 132 people entered their establishment, and out of the 132 that entered, 100 was elderly, appeared to be elderly or disabled. And then I watched Brighter Day Cafe, which is 118 North Main Street. So 43, she had 43 visitors at that time, but 37 of her visitors appeared to be elderly or disabled. And not even talk about the courthouse. I watched the courthouse on June 13th as they entered and exit the building. I lost count of the courthouse, but then I started to just count how many people that I thought or appeared to be disabled. And altogether, it was 300 that appeared to be disabled or elderly. Harper Table, on June 14th, they had 57 visitors, 42 were, appeared to be elderly or disabled and showed some signs of disability. Suffolk now has a population of 105,125, and out of that 105,000, 70,000 are elderly. And out of the 70,000 that's elderly, 20,000 are 80, at the age of 80 and above. And if you take a sample of this counseling, everybody I think over here is over 55, 60. So that, if you just use that sample, how this need is so important in this city, that we need to have these people come and be able to play bingo, teach a sewing class, do karaoke, educate them on medical directives, how all the wills of the death and the process, the powers of attorney. So I plan on teaching all this, because, I don't know if you know, but I am a certified, highly qualified education high school teacher, and I taught finance. So, and I just want to always try to be a good citizen to the city of Suffolk and make sure that we're doing the right thing by our citizens. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've given this one an awful lot of thought, and I think a lot of my primary concerns revolve around the lack of access to the back of the property and having the clients having to come all the way around East Washington Street and around the corner on North Main Street. And this application, the Downtown Advisory Committee had a meeting on Monday, and this application was discussed at length by a great number of stakeholders in the downtown area, which obviously is what the Downtown Advisory Committee has made up, and they voted unanimously to request that this council deny the C U P for a lot of those very same reasons. So with that, I will make a motion to deny the C U P.
Okay, we have a motion for denial from Councilmember Rector. Councilmember Wright.
Good evening. So I've had an opportunity to look at the staff report, which they recommended approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and what I'm hearing from the applicants is you have made an adjustment to load from the back, but utilizing the front door. Mr. Townsend or Mrs. Townsend, can you come? I have a couple of questions. Please. Okay, so Councilmember Rector raised a concern about being able to get your clients from loading from the back to the front. Can you tell us how you plan to do that?
The reason why, it required easement for us to use the rear door. We have a rear door. It require the owner of the school board that's living in California to put it on his deed for us to use the easement just to walk my clients from the back. He said no, because he have no interest in it. What do he gain from it? As a businessman, he don't want to tie down his building to an easement just in case he sell it in the next 30 years. So he tied to my building. So I looked at it, why should we use the back door? What other building in downtown Suffolk use the back door? Are we going back in time now 'cause you old, 'cause you got a disability, use the rear door? How many accident have we had on Main Street from somebody getting hit? I'm part of downtown. I have four buildings downtown. They come into my restaurant. I don't tell them to use my rear door because you old, because you in a wheelchair, because you black. Are we still doing that in 2025? Why is using a front door, even if they got a park in the front? We got parking. They still park there.
So I understand the reasoning why the back door was part of the application, because it, where it's located, it's the second building from the corner, and it can impede traffic. So I understand that. I guess what my question to you is, because there is that restriction there with the back door, which that owner does have that, you know, that right to make that decision, you have now opted to, you've come up with an alternate plan. I just want to hear what that is. So I know that you're now going, it sounds like you're going to load the, not patients, your clients from the rear, but you're still going to enter the front. Are you clear on like what all that entails in the distance if you have disabled clients?
Yes, it will not be 25 people at one time. It will be one or two person at a time. So it won't be a trail of my clients at one time, 15 people in a wheelchair going toward my facility. It'd be one at a time. They come in maybe on an hour, three people at a hour, on an hour.
Okay.
So it's not an impact on traffic or a hazard.
But so, but you are okay with that? You're okay with if it's raining, you're having to walk your clients around the building? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for answering that. So.
And, Madam Councilmember, we'll have certified people to do that as well.
Okay.
So our staff will be certified by the state licensing different committees that they need to be licensed by to make sure they can escort, enter, and exit the building.
Okay.
And also, Madam, you saying load, all our clients are not going to have to be loaded.
Got it.
These are active adults. They elderly, yes, they do might have a disability, but these are active adults like all of us.
Understood.
I'm 64, and I'm doing everything that I can do.
Okay, thank you. So I ask those questions because, again, having looked at what the recommendations are from the staff, from the planning committee, and now the recommendation from the Downtown Council, I don't know how this works. I know that Rector recommended we deny it. So my recommendation is that we approve it, and so I don't know how we go about me doing that motion, but it is our job to ensure that there are not anything that's going against the U D O. It is our job to ensure that safety is adhered to. The safety issue is being resolved, and you are clear of what some of those obstacles may be, and you're opting to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe that it is the job of the council to determine the type of service that you're going to provide to your residents. So when your clients come aboard and they know that they're going to be entering through the front of the building, that is a personal business decision. That is not something that I need to weigh in on. If it is not a safety issue, it does not go against the U D O. So I recommend we approve this. This is a conditional use permit, and should for any reason you all violate that, I think that this council has the opportunity to revoke that conditional use permit. But I don't think that it is in our capacity to tell you how you're going to transport your, the level of service you're going to provide if it's not illegal and it doesn't go against our U D O. So, Attorney, I don't know how I do the motion.
You have to make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion.
There's no motion on the floor because Ms. Rector's motion.
So it hasn't been seconded? Okay.
So you can make a motion.
So I would like to make a motion to approve this conditional use permit and give this organization an opportunity to follow through with it. It's conditional use. So if they don't follow through, then we do our part as this council to revoke that conditional use permit. So that is my motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. For approval, Councilmember Johnson.
Come back up a minute, Mr. Townsend. I don't, I need to understand, what you want to go forward with here does not bother me at all. I think it's lovely, and these people need a place to be. But the simple fact that there may be some disabled, maybe people with a thought process problem, you don't have a problem with not having a back door? Or you're not having a?
For emergency purpose, we do have a rear door.
You can open the back door.
We do got a rear door for emergency purpose.
Okay, so if there was a fire or?
Yes, we got a rear door.
There was a rescue squad needed to be called?
Yes, the rear door is there.
They could come up to the back door?
Rescue, yes.
So, I mean, it's there for that kind of?
It's there for that reason.
Okay, that concerns me, the safety issue, and personally, I don't want to be on that corner with a rescue squad coming on that corner. As far, I don't disagree with what Ms. Admany said here, because now, is it ideal for right there on the square? Do you think that this is ideal for what we want our downtown to be? It will have more people down there. Hopefully, they'll shop and they'll be a part of downtown, but I foresee that there could be a potential issue with safety, and that's what really, really concerns me. I know that corner, and in the very near future, the building next door to you is going to have, it's going to be used for other things, so that will change at some point. My concern is the back door as well. I just, I have a hard time. In my business, I have one back door that I keep locked all the time. The fire department comes in there all the time, says you can't do that, unlock it. So that's what my concern is as far as the safety part.
And that rear door still stay unlocked during business hour.
Okay, so?
It always stays unlocked.
So you lock it from the inside?
You just can't come through from the outside unless somebody open the door for you, and we'll be alarm on the front door and the rear door.
Okay, all right. You don't want to open a daycare center, do you? We need a daycare center downtown.
I don't know, we got so many vacant buildings. Do we prefer vacant buildings or some type of business in that building?
Well, businesses that work and can generate a profit for you and can make the downtown a better place to be.
And of course, you know, I did three more businesses in downtown, and they all been successful.
I'm sorry?
I have three more businesses on East Washington, West Washington, two on East Washington, and they all been successful.
That's a good thing.
So I'm giving back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yeah, so we hate to keep you all going back and forth, but I have a question also. So my impression reading the application was that you've got a group of 15 people, and they're all coming in at 9:00, and they're all leaving at 6:00. So correct me on that, because it sounds to me like this is going to be folks coming and going. So like I said, in my mind, I'm thinking of a daycare for young people, that, you know, the parents come in the morning and drop them off and don't come back until 6:00 at night. But you're, what you're saying is this is going to be day use, some people coming at 11:00 for an hour, and is that more?
That's correct. It's not like a school where everybody come in at 9:00 and leave at 6:00.
Right.
But even a school, they do not come in at the same time.
Right.
Even a daycare, they do not come at the same time. The parents have to drop them off according to their schedule, and then we, the caregivers would drop their parents off according to their schedule and pick up their parents according to their schedule.
Okay, okay.
And everybody do not have the same schedule.
Okay, thank you. Because I, echoing what has been said, I admire what you want to do, and I think it's obviously something that we really need, and I do take a little exception with you looking my way, talking about old people. But if the shoe fits, I think we're the same age. But I respect what you're trying to do. My major concern reading through the application was the safety factor, and, you know, what does it do to traffic right there on Main Street? But I think if it's gradual folks coming and going, and you do have the emergency exit in the back, I feel like you all are addressing the safety issues, so, anyway, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett.
While you was up there, you might have wasted everybody finished. That's all right, go ahead. I'll just comment. Go ahead, you can sit down. Now, my concern were, I think you've answered all of them, and I know you know what your conditions are, if it's approved, what your conditions are, and you're not going to come back and say, well, I didn't realize that you're not supposed to drop people off in the front, because right on that corner, you know, it's hard with buses and everything turning there to be dropping off. I know parking space is down a little bit from the drugstore, but you can't be stopping up there in that corner. I just want to make sure you all understand that. So if the police or somebody else has an issue, then if we have to come back and say, well, okay, you're not living by your conditions, and we're going to revoke it, then you'll understand the reason why.
Absolutely.
We absolutely understand that.
Okay, that's my concern, that you all understood that. And with that, I'll second Councilman Wright's motion.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Wright, seconded by Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Wright.
I just wanted for the record, Mr. and Mrs. Townsend, not everyone up here is older than 55. I just wanted that to be on the record. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion for approval on the floor. Do we have any other further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to two to one. Councilmembers Rector and Johnson voted in opposition, and Mayor Dooman has abstained.
Okay, our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a sewage treatment plant, utility facility, not otherwise enumerated in outdoor operations and storage use on property. on property located at sixty-nine oh nine Armstead Road, zoning map six, parcel thirty-six, account number three zero six zero zero one four two zero. This is C U P twenty twenty-five one. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Meg Pittinger will give the staff report. Meg?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, this is a conditional use permit request for the Nansaman Swift facility. This property is up in the Northern Growth Area, right adjacent to six sixty-four at the base of the Monitor Merrimack. This request is to amend the previously approved conditional use permit at the facility there. Specifically, this is for the Swift facility on the northern parcel. The approved facility was initially conceptualized to be a hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet and the specific layout, as is the practice, was incorporated into the approval of the previous approved C U P. Since then, the, the design has been refined, resulting in actually a reduction of the overall floor area and thus that necessitates an amendment of the C U P. So here you can see the previously approved layout had a variety of buildings and structures and elements that will go into the operation of the Swift facility. And here you can see the amended layout. You can see it's turned a bit to the left and you may not be able to tell from this layout, but it has gotten smaller. No encroachments, no problems, just a smaller and, and kind of realigned layout of the C U P. And here you can see the layouts of them next to each other. Again, it's a little bit smaller and slightly aligned differently, thus necessitating an amendment to the C U P. Staff doesn't have any issues with this. And the Planning Commission at the May twentieth meeting voted seven to zero to approve the applications with its conditions. And I will stand by for any questions you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pittinger. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager and staff. Fred Taylor with Bush and Taylor, P.C., two hundred North Main Street, here this evening on behalf of the applicant Hampton Road Sanitation District for, for once, and I'm sure you will all be grateful. I am going to be extremely brief tonight. Ms. Pittinger did an excellent job of outlining the situation and going over what this body and the Planning Commission approved back in two thousand twenty-three. The only change we are requesting, because we're required to, anytime there's a deviation of more than five percent, whether you get bigger or you get smaller, we've got to come back to you and ask for that amendment. In, in this case, nothing about the project is changing. Still, same project that you approved, same initiative. And the only difference is we're going to do the same thing, but make less of an impact, less of a footprint, which I think is a benefit for all involved. We have with us this evening staff from both the Hampton Road Sanitation District as well as our design build team. We are happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the project. And as I noted, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. What is your pleasure? Vice Mayor Ward?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk? Please record the, I'm sorry. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Now, Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, large, at least six thousand square feet in main sanctuary use on property located at two thirty Meadowview Boulevard, zoning map twelve V, parcel E, account number three zero six zero zero two three nine eight. This is C U P twenty twenty-five two. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Meg will provide the staff report also.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager indicated, this is a conditional use permit for the Riverbend Church in the Bennett, I'm going to say this wrong, the Bennett Square neighborhood. This is in the Northern Growth Area, right on Shoulders Hill Road. There is an existing church there at twenty, at two thirty Meadowview Boulevard and the church is planning to increase the size of the worship hall from a hundred and ninety seats to three hundred and seventy-nine seats in the main sanctuary. They are proposing to, they're not expanding the building. They're all doing this within the existing footprint. They're planning to remove the existing foyer and warming kitchen and classroom to create the additional space. Their worship service is proposed to be from nine a.m. to one p.m., obviously on Sundays. And then throughout the week, small groups will meet, you know, twenty to thirty people occasionally at the church. The applicant does have sufficient parking on the property and they have a shared parking agreement with the office, the dentist's office to the west at two ten Meadowview Boulevard. We already have that parking agreement in hand. So you can see here the current layout. They've got the, the seats up in the front by the, by the altar area. And then you can see this pretty large foyer and area in the back where they've got the kitchen and, and some of the things. And here is their proposed layout. So they'll be taking some of that area on the inside out and then adding the additional seats. By, by amending this, they are required to come back and, and get a conditional use permit for this assembly use there. You can see their parking layout here. They've got a number of spaces on their property. And then again, as I mentioned, they have a shared parking agreement, a written agreement that they've entered into with the property next door. It is a dentist's office, so the hours don't overlap. So when they need to use the, the parking, the dentist's office will be closed, closed. So thus, there's, there's sufficient parking for the number of seats that they are proposing for this expanded church use. The Planning Commission at their May twentieth meeting did vote seven to zero to approve this application with the conditions. And I will stand by for any questions you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide your name and address? And that is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. My name is Joshua Leota. My home address is three eight zero two Aspen Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I am the senior pastor of Riverbend Church. Recently took over in September of two thousand twenty-four. And over that time, we've seen an increase in attendance to where we are looking to be able to maintain our two services to, to avoid going to three services and to help provide a less of a toll on our volunteers by keeping it two services. So we're looking for ways to, to increase capacity to make this happen. And we believe that this is the, the best way for us to do that. And so I'm available for any questions moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's good to see you all this evening. Just a couple of quick additions. If you remember, some of you are here, some of you are newer. But in two thousand seventeen, there was a conditional use permit for the same church, but it was for across the street.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. Melissa Venable, Lamb, you don't care that I work for Lamb Planning Solutions. Melissa Venable, fifty-eight fifty-seven Harborview Boulevard in Suffolk, two three four three six, three five.
Thank you.
Sorry. Long story short, that C U P, that was a bit controversial. The neighbors were concerned about the size of that building and it was Riverbend Church, two thousand seventeen, pre-COVID. Prior to us submitting this application, they've withdrawn that C U P. I wanted to let you know that there's been communication with the homeowners association as it relates to this application. It seems to be supported. There's been conversation about parking, but I feel like everybody feels fairly comfortable with the spaces they have on site, along with the additional shared parking agreement. So I will also stand by for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Question, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Wright?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember White. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a contractors and trade shops, indoor operations and outdoor storage, including heavy vehicles, equipment, less than ten thousand square feet in area use on property located at twenty-six seventy-four Carolina Road. This is zoning map fifty-five, parcel eighteen D, account number one zero zero nine zero four five zero zero. And this is C U P twenty twenty-five three. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Meg Pittinger, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, will again provide the staff report. Meg?
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use permit to establish a contractor and trade shop on Carolina Road. This is outside of the Central Growth Area, right on Carolina Road at Copeland. This property is at twenty-six seventy-four Carolina Road. It is zone A agricultural zoning district. The building was previously used as an office for a nearby sawmill operation that is obviously no longer in, in operation. But the building has been vacant for at least ten years. The applicant is proposing to run their existing construction business, actually moving their business to Suffolk. And they're going to have that in the building. They're only going to use it for office staff. There won't be any customers coming to, to the site. They do have a couple of pickup trucks and some trailers that they will park on the property overnight. They've been working on the building, trying to get it ready to open the business. You can see here, it's a relatively small building, but they've got some office space and some other spaces that are already in there. And then there is actually existing parking on the site. It's paved. There are a number of entrances, both on the Carolina roadside and on the airport roadside. And one of the conditions that staff has proposed is that they close all of those entrances so that traffic can't go in and out except for one, so that we can minimize the amount of conflicts. Carolina Road, if you've ever been there, people drive pretty fast. So we have proposed that as a condition, that traffic engineering will work with them to, in a manner that, that is acceptable to the city, so that they close all of those entrances but one so that, that we can make sure that it is safe. Planning Commission at their May twentieth meeting did vote seven to zero to approve this application with the conditions. And I will again stand by for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in rebuttal, excuse me, and those in opposition, and then in a five-minute period for those in rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide your name and address? And that is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Melissa Skilbred. I live at one thirty-eight Gene Avenue in Suffolk, Virginia, two three four three four. I am one of the co-owners of Navco, requesting the conditional use permit for our roofing and construction business, just as a space for office and for our team members to grab their daily tasks and be able to conduct business not in my house. And as far as the vehicles go, they're just standard pickup trucks and a couple of dump trailers and a landscape trailer. Nothing super heavy.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Once again, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers? Additional speakers? This public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilmember Williams?
May I move to approve?
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family daycare, five to twelve children use on property located at five twenty-two Kilby Avenue. This is zoning map thirty-four C, parcel S four, asterisk twenty, asterisk twenty-one, account number one five zero six three eight zero zero zero. This is C U P twenty twenty-five seven. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Meg Pittinger will again provide the staff report.
Do I get a frequent flyer discount?
Yeah, I'm telling.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the mayor indicated, this is a conditional use permit request for a family day home. This property is located at five twenty-two Kilby Avenue. It is in the Saratoga neighborhood in the Central Growth Area. Currently, the applicant, this is in a single-family home. That's how family day homes are defined in our ordinance and also in state code. And they would, they are requesting to, to care for up to twelve children. That is the maximum that is allowed under the U D O and under state code for a family day home. It is a residential home, two-story, that's about two thousand square feet. They've got four bedrooms and two bathrooms. And they are, they're currently operating a family daycare, a day home for up to four children, which is something that can be approved and was approved administratively. Their hours of operation that they are proposing is six a.m. to six p.m., seven days a week. An unusual request, in this request that I want to point out is they are requesting overnight care from six p.m. to six a.m. They have stated that this is a really needed service that people who work shifts and work, you know, beyond your standard hours need some overnight care. The state has some very specific requirements that the applicant will have to adhere to for that overnight care regarding, it's in your staff report, but regarding when the, the adults, the caregivers have to stay awake until the children go to sleep, the thickness of the mattresses based on the age of the children, all kinds of things that the state is, is going to regulate on their level. They are proposing to use it downstairs, so no children will be going up the stairs. And the space is sufficient to comply with the Department of Education standards. They have a fenced-in backyards, fully fenced, and they're going to utilize that for the outdoor play area, which will be limited to the hours of eight a.m. to, and six p.m. in accordance with the, with the U D O. You can see the layout here of the, the play area and the downstairs area. She's indicated some areas that the children will not have any access to. You'll see here in a minute in the pictures, she's got a number of gates that are already up that the children won't be able to access, these areas that are not part of the day area or are not safe for, for children. And then the back fenced-in area, and the applicant, I believe, will speak to this. This does show a trampoline and a fence separating the backyard. Those have since been removed. The state doesn't actually allow you to have a trampoline and have an adult, have a child daycare. So those have actually been removed by the applicant prior to this meeting. Here you can see some pictures that the applicant provided of the interior space, some of the play items, the outdoor space, some of the items that are already there in the rear yard for the children, some cribs for the younger children. And again, you can see the area here in the backyard that that trampoline has been removed. She's got plenty of parking in her large driveway and also on the street. The Planning Commission at their May meeting did approve, did recommend an approval of this seven to zero with? The Planning Commission at their May meeting did approve, did recommend an approval of this seven to zero with the conditions. And I will stand by again for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you again, Ms. Pittinger. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Where the first speaker, please come forward and provide your name and address, and has to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. Appreciate your time. My name is Rashah Ali. I live in 522 Kilby Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia, 23434, and I am the daycare giver. We removed the trampoline and the fence in the backyard, so now we have the backyard more than 1,000 square feet, which recommended. We have a good-sized parking. And about the, and the in-home, like, all is safe, gated, like, for the, for the safety, number one. The kids, they can learn, they can, like, learn, play, what, they can get nap, so good. And about the night care, it's very important. Like, we have a family in the military. We have family, they work in the EMT Fire Department. So, and I have experience. I will be the daycare giver for the nighttime, and we have the cribs, the playpen, the, all the size, and the thickness is important, and, like, any question, I am here.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Once again, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilmember Williams.
May I move to approve, but I actually rode by the, the property. I think it's something that's well-needed. It's a good place, and it's, again, it's something that's needed for our area. The overnight stay, that's something rare, but I'm sure that's needed because you do have people in the military, people who work for the Fire Department, people that work at night. I've never heard that before, however, this is a good thing. So with that, again, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, I got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Wright. And a second from Councilmember Wright. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. I'm sorry. Councilmember Johnson?
Just a question. This is just for my own information, if you don't mind, please. A lot of, a lot of daycares are only four to five kids, or three to five kids. This is actually up to 12 children.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so when you have that many children in a daycare facility, what are the requirements from the Health Department or from the?
We have staff, like, there is point.
Pardon me?
There is point for the age, like, the age from three months to one year to two years, and up, there is point.
Correct.
So each staff, so when we have 12 kids, that means at least we're going to be three daycare giver, at least. It depends on the point we have. So there is some requirement. We go through it, and this is the most, this is, we cannot get the license of, this, until, like, we have, we take classes, and each year also we take a couple, classes for that. So there is point. Like, when we have 12 kids, at least three, three or four daycare giver.
So you have someone that's actually checking on you monthly or from the state?
And like, like, the infant, so each infant, we're going to be four point.
Sure.
So I have, if I have four infant, that's 16 point. Each, like, daycare giver, or we say, as, we have 16 point. And the 12 kids, if we have a kid, like my grandson, they can, they cannot, we don't count it on the 12, but we count him on the point.
Okay.
So there is point. Like, for the up, more than two years, it's going to be two points, or less than two years, three points. So each teacher should be 16 points, no more than.
Well, like Councilmember Williams, I agree. We need daycare in this country.
It's important, and the night shift is so important.
You have a good, you have a good, this doesn't really matter, I'm just curious. You have good family to support you and you have?
That's correct. Yeah, I live with my daughter and my son-in-law, and I have another daughter and son, and my grandson. And my daughter, she's working with me, too.
Okay.
But I am the main person in the daycare because I'm, I'm over there, like, all the day, night. My daughter, she go, like?
Well, you make me feel good. Thank you.
You are most welcome. Thank you so much.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for approval. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend sections 31-724C, 31-724D, and 31-724E of the Unified Development Ordinance in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 2025-2. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, again, Meg Pittinger will provide the staff report. Meg?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. So here is the ordinance text amendment portion of the agenda. Mr. Wine walked you through at your last meeting, give you a preview of some of these, but I'm going to get you a little bit more into detail of what were being proposed to amend in the ordinances tonight. The first one is the solar ordinance, specifically about some, the placement of inverters and transformers and other things that create noise within these facilities. As you are aware, the mechanical equipment associated with these facilities does sometimes generate noise and can often be a problem to some surrounding properties. It's the cooling of those inverters that causes, and transformers that cause the noise. You know, think of the giant HVAC, you know, system on a building like this. If you're standing near it, produces a significant amount of noise sometimes. So staff did research the noise and setback regulations in some surrounding localities and some other sources to provide some possible modifications to the solar standards. There are other local localities near us that provide, that require some additional setbacks for this equipment that generates noise. We did not find any surrounding localities that have regulations that require the installation of sound barriers around the equipment. Just as a matter of kind of some background, you know, the decibel scale is the method, the accepted method by the U.S. EPA to measure sound, and it's a logarithmic scale. It's not a linear thing, so when you go from 20, when you go to 10 to 20, it's, it's 10 times louder, right? When you go from 30, from 10 to 30, it's 100 times louder. So, you know, a reduction of that amount is also in that, in that vein. You know, what we're talking about in the UDO is based on certain time periods. It's also in city code, but in the UDO, you can't, you know, exceed these sound levels, and it's different, obviously, it's, you know, required to be quieter at night. You can be a little bit more loud during the day. It's also depending on the property that is receiving the sound. So the current regulations don't have any specific regulations for this equipment that generates noise. You know, we're kind of learning as we do these solar facilities, things that we need to to kind of be aware of. There's setbacks for the equipment itself, that, you know, the total facility, the panels and all of that, but not anything specific for the inverters. So the first thing that the staff looked at was having a setback for this sound-producing equipment of 250 feet. That is what we found in some local, some other localities. I believe Southampton, Isle of Wight, both have a 250-foot setback requirement for this equipment. But based on this existing facility in the city of Suffolk, it only gets you about another 50 feet beyond the property line for that. And we determined that we thought that that was probably not quite enough based on the existing facility and the noise that is being generated from that inverter transformer that's, that's quite near the front. So the proposal that I'll walk you through here in a, in a minute will be scaled based on the size of the facility being proposed, whether that's five megawatts of electricity being generated or less, or five megawatts and above. 400 feet for those smaller facilities from all the exterior property boundaries, or 1,000 feet for those larger facilities. This particular facility here is one of the larger facilities, one that you approved not too long ago, was a smaller facility. So we thought that having a scaled approach, because one of the reasons that that's important is that as you get more equipment, you're going to have more inverters, larger inverters, larger transformers, so there's going to be potential for more sound. So having it be scaled based on the size, we figured, makes some sense because you're going to have more sound with the larger facilities. And so why does distance matter? There's, you know, not, I'm not going to give you too much math tonight, but there is this inverse square law that basically says, as you get further away, the square of the distance, that's how much the sound starts to dissipate. So having the, the sound-producing equipment be further away, it will be, it will be less sound. You know that, you know, if you're here and you hear something that's in the distance, it's less loud than if somebody's standing right next to you. So the proposed changes, we would like to, we're proposing to add language to the UDO requiring that the facility be in compliance with the approved noise study. In the current regulations, they have to provide, when they submit a CUP application for a solar facility, they have to submit a noise study to indicate how loud the facility is going to be, and that's something that the council can take into consideration. So we've already been adding, and that if it isn't in compliance at any time, that they have to make any changes to get it back into compliance within 30 days. We've already been adding this language as a condition in the last couple of CUP applications that have come through for solar, but this would actually make it part of the code, so that it would be something that is codified. We would add a requirement, this is where the distance that I was just talking about would come in. We would add a requirement for projects that are less than five megawatts AC of total energy. Just a little technical piece, there's a difference between megawatts AC and megawatts DC. DC is what is produced directly from the panels. As it gets converted and inverted to AC by the inverters, that's how you get the AC. Usually, the AC is lower, so by conditioning it based on this, this will be the maximum that they can achieve by that facility. So if it is five megawatts of total energy produced or less than any new substations or connector stations, we haven't seen any of those yet in Suffolk. Most of these facilities are connecting to existing things, but should that occur, those larger facilities would need to be, need to be set back further, so 600 feet. But those inverters and transformers that produce the noise, those would need to be set back that 400 feet from the exterior property boundaries. As you get to the larger facilities, if you're at five megawatts and above, then you would have to have those inverters and, those substations and connector stations be 1,500 feet back from the exterior property boundaries, and those inverters and transformers be 1,000 feet from the exterior property boundaries. We would propose to add a section stipulating that these actually are the minimums, that city council, in reviewing an application, can apply greater setbacks if the application appears to warrant that. So it gives city council some additional authority as you're approving these. If you have, you know, if there's a collection of houses around it or something else that's sensitive, city council would have that authority to do some additional setbacks, should you, should you deem that to be necessary. So this one might seem a little strange at first, but I'll explain why it's here. Allow the equipment, but not buildings, because the building code doesn't allow buildings to cross property lines, but allow the equipment, the panels and such, to cross property lines interior to the facility. What we had happen on a previous application was the property, the parcel, the project was made up of several different parcels that were owned by different people, and having a requirement to vacate those lines was going to be really complicated for them, especially in the future, if the solar facility then gets decommissioned. Then you've got all these properties that are now under strange ownership. They also, in that particular one, wanted to put part of it in the conservation easement, which is going to be really complicated. So some other localities do have language allowing the equipment to cross property lines. The building official, the zoning administrator were all okay with that requirement, so that's why we, we put that proposed change to be in there. Require that the required landscape buffers be placed outside the perimeter fencing when adjacent to public right-ofways. Some of the facilities that have already been built obviously didn't have this requirement, and in some cases, the landscaping is inside the fence, and it just doesn't look attractive. Part of the landscape buffer is to, is for aesthetics, and having it be behind a metal fence doesn't really achieve that. So this is just kind of a clarification that, hey, the landscape buffer should be outside the fence, so it's actually a buffer. Require that the total megawatts of energy produced on the facility not exceed the amount produced in a conditional use permit. The reason we put this in here was, you know, we know technology gets more efficient. So if they, hey, figure it out and they want to do more electricity, this would require them to come back to city council and allow city council to reevaluate the project and make sure that it still meets what city council wants. Otherwise, they would have to stay at the megawatts that were approved originally by city council. And so that was a lot. Planning Commission at their May meeting did vote to, seven to zero, to approve this application with no, that's wrong, with no conditions. Obviously, this is an ordinance text amendment. So that's a lot, but if you have questions, I am obviously here at the conclusion of public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Where the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time. It's been a while since I've been up at this podium, actually smiling. So this is a good thing. It's a good start. I want to commend the Planning Commission, Meg and Kevin also, for not only their visits to their house, but inviting me over here. We've had meetings at this facility.
Sir, excuse me, can you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Shane Alexander, 1800 White Marsh, 23434. And so with that, with all the frustration that we've experienced and the neighbors have experienced, it's good to see that anyone going forward may not have to go through this frustration. I wish that it was immediately enforceable on ours, but of course, it's not. It'd be nice to see those inverters moved back 1,000 feet tomorrow as well. But I'll take a win where I can get a win. I thank you for your time. I thank everybody for listening. And as this is a positive move, I would also take it as just a tiny step forward. I think there's a lot more that needs to be done. So with that, I won't take any longer of your time. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I agree that this is a step in the right direction. I'm so glad that we continue to review some of these new things that are coming into the city and making sure that we have the rules in place to have them be good for our community and, and not have a negative impact. And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will second Councilperson Butler Barlow's motion to approve, but I would like to make a comment. I guess this is sort of, you know, try, try again. I'm glad to see what the Planning Commission has come up with in terms of this, but Meg, I have one quick question. Were you, on, on the larger facilities or actually either one of these facilities, the way it reads is, the, the bigger ones, 3,000 feet from the exterior property line?
1,000 feet.
I mean, I'm sorry, 1,000 feet. Wasn't there something that was 3,000 feet, or did I miss that? Okay, so, and, and that would be also from the back property line, too. So property is going to have to be at least 2,000 square feet, probably in either direction, to be able to locate these pieces of equipment?
Right, or they would have to make it a smaller facility.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Do we have any other discussion? I would also like to just reiterate what Councilmember Butler Barlow stated, as well as Councilmember Rector, in that since we have been, had to as Councilmember Rector, in that since we have been, had to deal with solar facilities, we have learned through our experience, we have learned. I want to commend the planning commission and the staff for the recommendations that they've made. Even though we're talking about decibels with the distance that we are requiring, that handles the, that takes care of the tonal noise as well with the placement of the inverters. And we have, as a council, I know when we first started dealing with solar, really, we were requesting more guidance, and we didn't have it because we're all on, on some type of a learning curve. Unfortunately, you know, we have to learn through our experiences and we can't go back. I seriously, I mean, I, I hope we're doing everything we can to rectify the situations that, you know, have occurred before we passed this ordinance. But I think with the passing of this ordinance, we have really dotted the i's, crossed the t's, and taken into consideration everything we possibly could regarding the size and location, and also the requirement to provide the sound studies at the same time. So once again, thank you very much, I fully support this. So we do have a motion for approval on the floor. If there is no other discussion, then council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance of Suffolk, Virginia to add Section thirty-one dash seven two seven and amend Appendix A, and this is OTA twenty twenty-five-three. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Meg will give the staff report also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is an ordinance text amendment, as Kevin briefed you on, in your last meeting, to add a section of supplemental standards to the Unified Development Ordinance, which is something that we do from time to time when we get a use. We did that with the warehouses a year and a half ago or so, things that are becoming an issue that we didn't really have standards for, and that being truck stops. Recently, there have been some concerns brought forward about the parking of trucks in and around these facilities that provide truck fueling. Without adequate parking, and you, I'm going to show you some examples here in a minute, these trucks often end up parking all over the place, on adjacent properties, in the street, or blocking access aisles on the site itself, causing potential safety issues. We did take a look at several existing facilities in the city and in nearby community, communities, and have recommended some standards for these facilities. So currently, what is a truck stop in the city of Suffolk, in the UDO, this is the definition. Basically, it already says any facility offering fuel for sale for commercial vehicles, and then strangely for a definition, it kind of has some standards in there. What, what you'll see, what part of our proposal is we take some of these standards about sleep accommodations, restaurants, and things like that, and actually put them into the standards. So truck stops and travel plazas, right now, they are currently permitted by right in the M-two zoning district, which means no CUP, they can just put in a site plan, they have to comply with whatever standards are in place in the ordinance, and they are allowed to do it. In the M-one and the B-two zoning district, it does require a conditional use permit. So in that case, in addition to the standards, additional conditions, as you are aware, can be added to those cases. So I'm going to walk you through several facilities, some in Suffolk and some in surrounding communities, kind of show you what some of the problems are and how some things are, have been done to correct some of those. So this is the Royal Farms on Holland Road, recently opened. This facility actually has five truck fueling lanes, was not classified as a truck stop when it was, when it came in, and so you can see there's no truck parking. There is no truck scale here, and as Kevin talked about last month, or at your last meeting, that's important, and you'll see in some of the other facilities, that once they get into having a truck scale, they're really in the business of being a truck stop. It's also something that staff can see on a site plan versus having indoor showers or things inside of the building that is not going to be apparent during a site plan review. So having a truck scale, and again, you're going to see in some examples, kind of really gets them in the truck stop business. But you can see by not having any truck parking, the trucks are parking there anyway, they're going into the convenience store, doing whatever they're doing, but they are parking there, blocking the access aisles, and again, potentially causing, causing problems there. Every use in the UDO is required to provide parking for the types of customers that are coming in. If you build McDonald's, you have to put parking in. If you build a warehouse, we have truck parking requirements and those things. So these uses should be providing parking for the users that are coming there. And again, you can see the trucks are coming there, they're just parking along the side. This is the duck through in Whaleyville, it's a little bit smaller, it's only got four truck fueling lanes, there's no truck parking, there is no truck scale, it's not, it's not, you know, considered to be a truck stop as it, as it was built. But again, you can see that there are trucks parked in a number of areas on the facility. So getting into some of the larger facilities, this is the pilot, and also the sheets down in the bottom corner there, that is up on Route sixty, Route four sixty. The pilot itself has, so when it was suggested, when we first started looking at the standards, we suggested ten spaces for every truck fueling lanes, and we kind of were like, that seems like a lot. But as we started looking at these facilities, you can see that they're already providing that. There are no standards in Prince George County or in Isle of Wight or Franklin, I'll show you one of those facilities here in a minute, requiring for truck stops. So there's no requirement, but the folks that are building these are doing these. Even the new sheets that was just built there, right adjacent to the pilot, it's got five trucks fueling lanes and twenty-five truck spaces. There's no truck scale at the sheets, but there is one at the pilot, and you can see again, that almost all, a lot of the spaces that are, some, some of the places where the trucks are parked, there's actually not a striped space there, so some of the vacant spaces, they're not parked there, but they're parked in some other places. This is the Loves kind of down on four sixty from the pilot. Again, it's got seven truck fueling lanes, it's got eighty-four truck spaces, and it does have a truck scale. And then this is the Loves right out on fifty-eight in Franklin, it's got six truck fueling lanes, it's got seventy-eight truck spaces, and it does have a truck scale. And you can see, and this is probably a separate problem, but in addition to the trucks parked on the facility, some of the trucks parked on that dead end street there, so they probably got something else going on there. So staff has proposed a number of supplemental use standards for truck stops and travel plazas to minimize these impacts, and these would apply to all facilities that provide truck fueling lanes. We would amend the definition of truck stop to add travel plaza, as you saw, you may have seen in the use table, travel plaza is already part of the use, in the use table, so these will align those two things, having the definition match what's in the use table. And then also clarify the definition. So the biggest part of this amendment is the number of spaces, and we, we changed this between planning commission and city council so that we would provide a little bit more of maybe an equitable situation. If there are smaller facilities, three or fewer truck fueling lanes with no truck scale, then they would have four trucks, truck parking spaces per fueling lane. If they go more than three spaces but still no truck scale, then we would go to five. If they have three or fewer truck fueling lanes and they do have a truck scale, then we would go to six. And then once you get above three and a truck scale, then we would go to ten. We would require that the truck parking be accessible at all hours during, when the facility is open. A lot of these facilities are already open twenty-four hours, we want to make sure that the parking is always available while they're open so that trucks have a place to go. We would require that a, with the conditional use permit or the site plan, as I mentioned in the M-two, it's actually by right, so there's no CUP, but they would need to provide an auto turn exhibit, which this is a standardized application that folks that are designing site plans utilize to make sure that the vehicles that are accessing the site have enough room to make the turns. As you know, trucks have to make wide turns. Sometimes they put these facilities are way too close together, you know, that whether it's the, the overhead for the truck fueling lanes or the buildings, and this would, would be a requirement, so we'd make sure that it's actually going to work on site and we would not cause problems on site with access. Require that a landscape buffer screen would be required when the facility abuts public property or properties that contain residential uses, institutional uses, conservation uses, and recreational uses. This language comes from the same language that we used in the warehouse standards, since sometimes you can have trucks idling, some of the same issues that are in place with the warehouses. But allow tractor trailer trucks to be parked on site overnight with the facility operator's consent. We don't want to create a situation where they're parked there and then all of a sudden it's a violation of the zoning ordinance because you got folks sleeping in their truck overnight, which normally you're not allowed to sleep in a vehicle. This would allow that in these facilities, as long as the facility owner is, is, is okay with it. And again, would allow them to be there and not somewhere else on the street or, or in a neighborhood or something like that. And then require parking for passenger vehicles on the site in accordance with the UDO, there's already requirements for that, so we didn't need to change anything there. But the requirement that it be physically separated, if you notice in some of those examples, they have a physical separation so that the trucks are not driving through the passenger vehicle area, and again, causing potential safety issues there. And then lastly, allow those accessory uses that are currently in the definition, we'd pull those out of the definition and put these specifically into the standard, so they wouldn't require additional zoning approvals for if they want to sell parts, if they want to have a convenience store, if they want to have a restaurant, if they want to have the truck scale, want to have septic pump out for recreational vehicles, car washes, truck washes, and things like that. So those things would be allowed in the standards, as long as they're meeting all those other regulations. And again, that was a lot, so I'm here for questions. The planning commission at their May twentieth meeting did recommend seven to zero to approve these.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilmember Williams?
May I move to approve?
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Do we have any discussion of the motion? I'd just like to mention that, very similar to the ordinance that we just amended, now we're amending another ordinance, you know, and I think we got a little ahead of this one versus the solar ordinance. It's just outstanding, I think you've done a great job, the staff has done an excellent job, the planning commission has done, you know, their due diligence in putting this together, you've put a lot of forethought into it, you've looked to see what, what is working in other locations, and this is going to address some of the concerns that we had from our citizens in regards to tractor trailers parking in areas that, where they don't need to be. So this is going to provide for, to, along with the, the ability to get fuel. So once again, outstanding work. So we have a motion on the floor for approval. If there is no further discussion, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our last public hearing is in ordinance to amend Section thirty-one dash five oh six D of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA twenty twenty-five-five. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, this is the last time I get to call Meg to the mic tonight.
Last time. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I still have my voice, members of council. This is an ordinance text amendment in response to a state code change. I won't say that staff is in favor of this one, but this is one that we have to do because the state code changed. So this is in relation to the proposed times that the localities have to act on subdivision plaits and site plans. House Bill twenty-six sixty amended state code sections fifteen point two twenty-two fifty-nine and fifteen point two twenty-sixty of the Code of Virginia regarding the maximum number of days that localities have to act on proposed plaits and site plans. In the state code, they treat plaits and site plans the same, so the timing works on both of them. The state code change also speaks to the methods that must be used in identifying all the deficiencies on a platter plan responding to the applicant, and the number of days that the locality, which is a fewer number of days, to act on subsequent resubmissions of the plans and plaits. So currently in the UDO, in Section thirty-one five oh six, there is a, there is reference to those two state code sections, so you see fifteen point two twenty-two fifty-nine and fifteen point two twenty-two sixty already in there, and it states that the application shall be processed within the time period specified by the Code of Virginia in those code, those code sections. But it also has language in there and says, hey, for the convenience of the, of the reader, here's a table and a summary of those dates, of those, those number of days. So what we're proposing is actually to just remove that from the ordinance specifying the number of days, because it already refers back to the state code, which is what we're obligated to follow anyway. And so in addition to removing that, that text language here, we'd also propose to remove this column of this table, keep the table intact so that, you know, it does specify who the approving agency, agent is, but just remove the number of days. So that if the state code changes, again, which we hope that it does, to put maybe it back to a longer number of days, that we won't have to come back before you and, and amend the UDO. Again, obviously, we're going to, to always comply with, with state code. There's also a number of notes underneath the table there that you'll see in your staff report, we're proposing just to eliminate all those notes, because those all refer back to the state code sections, which are already listed in the text above. This item is being fast-tracked to you all, city planning commission heard it yesterday and did vote seven to zero to recommend its approval. We are fast-tracking it to you so that it can be in place before the state code change comes into effect, which will be July one, so a short period from now. And again, with that, I will stand by for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meg, I agree with you, I am not in favor of this OTA either. I, I, I think this is a classic example of the state trying to put a one-size-fits-all approach onto this process. I don't believe, based on my sixteen years on the planning commission, that the city of Suffolk, in their plan review process, is in all any way responsible for this reaction from the state. And in fact, I've been to a number of regional meetings and talked to city council people from our neighboring cities who say we wish that we would adopt the Suffolk model for site plan approval, and plan approval. But anyhow, it is a state law, and we have no choice but to follow state law. But I, I, I went to a meeting yesterday morning that was sponsored by the Builders Association, and they were doing their own legislative review, and they were talking about this, and I forget exactly how many days that they said, but basically, I guess statewide, with all the people that they deal with, the compression that it was going to put on the timeline for them was, you know, to be honest, I thought a lot of days. And I sort of adhere to the old adage that haste makes waste. I, I think in a lot of these cases, the plans are very complicated, the issues are very much involved, and you to, like, like I said, compress this timeline unne, unnecessarily on localities like Suffolk, I just don't simply agree with. But like I said, it is state law, we're going to have to agree with it. I think probably in a couple of years, we're going to probably see a revision to this legislation from the state, and they're going to go back to a more reasonable timeframe for allowing for plan approval. But like I say, with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the, approve the OTA.
Okay, we get a motion for approval from Councilmember Rector, Councilmember Bennett?
I second the motion.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, before we vote, I agree wholeheartedly, I don't think there was a lot of forethought put into this requirement, I think someone had the idea that they could expedite plan approval by shortening this process, but what I also understand is that, once it's submitted, once the- process, but what I also understand is that, once it's submitted, once the comments are provided, there's really only enough time to do that once, that they won't be able to come back again. So the applications that come in are going to have to be, you know, for one point, a lot more accurate, because they're only, I think the expression is, they're only going to get one bite at the apple after that. You know, once they make whatever amendments to it, if it doesn't work, then there's not enough time to do it again. So I think in the long run, it will end up blowing up somewhere along the line, but just like you said, you know, the state in their infinite wisdom have decided that that's what it's supposed to be, so, you know, we have no choice but to deal with it. So and there are no other questions or comments, we do have a motion on the floor for approval and I would ask council members to prepare to vote and please cast their votes. And Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no ordinances this evening, nor do we have any resolutions or staff reports. We do have a few motions. Our first motion is to schedule a public hearing for July second, twenty twenty-five to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail, segment one, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for July second, twenty twenty-five to receive comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastward Trail, segment three A. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for July second, twenty twenty-five to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail, segment three B, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
So moved.
Motion for approval, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July second, twenty twenty-five to receive public comment on a proposed amendment to the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fee schedule, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Ward?
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting regarding authorizing issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds, series twenty twenty-five, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
So moved.
Motion for approval, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of stormwater revenue bonds, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Rector?
So moved.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Rector, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to cancel the August sixth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
So moved.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And our last motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, July second, twenty twenty-five at four P M, unless canceled by the mayor and the city manager, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
So moved.
A motion from Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers and if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have one individual registered for non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies and affairs of city government and shall be presented five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our one individual this evening is Ann Horn, one thirty-three, Niblick Circle. That concludes the speakers, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we do have a number of board and commission nominations. The following individuals have been nominated for appointment to the respective boards and commissions. The Fine Arts Commission, Gail Hinton Copeland, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Human Services Advisory Board, Arthalia Kayhan, 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 effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Library Advisory Board, Jerry Norman, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Robert Wilkins, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Planning Commission, Gerald Goodman, Johnny Edwards and Selena Thornton Manuel, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Sister Cities Commission, Karen Munson, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. The Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Susan Blair and William Smith, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. And the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, Dorothy Gamble and Belinda Pitts.
Okay, counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Williams, Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Before moving to announcements and comments, is there any new business items that need to be brought before council for action? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments and at this time, I'll ask if Assistant Commonwealth Director Andy Franklin has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Mr. City Manager. We will start tonight with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe the Juneteenth holiday tomorrow, Thursday, June nineteenth. City offices will be closed, oops, city offices will be closed for the day, but will reopen on June nineteenth. Will reopen the next day, eight thirty P M on June twentieth. Trash and recycling pickup will not be affected and Suffolk transit will also run as normal. The City of Suffolk is proud to team up with the Saratoga Dreamers for Suffolk's inaugural Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June twenty-first from one to five P M at Downtown Festival Park. Celebrate freedom, culture and community with live music, cultural performances and family-friendly activities, including large-scale board games and a gaming bus. Explore a vibrant vendor market with over thirty local food, nonprofit and merchandise vendors and experience educational exhibits from partners like Fort Monroe Authority, the Sixteen Nineteen Project and the Chrysler Museum. There will also be an appearance from Miss Juneteenth Virginia, Kemma Anderson. This event is free and open to the public. I'm pleased to share some exciting news from the city manager's office. Lisa Bleakley has been named the city's new downtown development manager, effective June seventh. In this role, Lisa will lead the charge on revitalizing downtown Suffolk, working closely with city council's downtown master plan. She will focus on economic development, marketing and neighborhood improvement, helping us attract and retain businesses, encourage redevelopment and continue to improve downtown. Lisa brings a strong background in tourism, event management and business development to Suffolk. She has held several leadership positions with the City of Virginia Beach Convention and Visitors Bureau, including special events manager, assistant sales and service manager at the Virginia Beach Convention Center and resort administrator. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Marketing from Hawaii Pacific University and a Master of Tourism Administration from George Washington University. Welcome, Lisa. On June fourth, the new McDonald's at thirty-one seventy-nine Godwin Boulevard officially opened its doors. The ribbon cutting was more than just a ceremony, it was a true community event, bringing together familiar faces from all over Suffolk. In attendance were councilperson Butler Barlow, Sheriff David Miles and even a special appearance by the Hamburglar. On June tenth, the Suffolk Police Department held a badge-pinning ceremony to officially welcome ten new officers to the city. The badge-pinning ceremony is a meaningful tradition symbolizing not just the start of an officer's service, but also their commitment to upholding the values and responsibilities that come with wearing the Suffolk badge. We're grateful for their willingness to step up and serve and we look forward to seeing the positive impact they'll have on our city. Congratulations to all of our new officers. Looking ahead, Suffolk Parks and Recreation is excited to announce that their annual teen summit is back. Mark your calendars for Saturday, August twenty-third from nine A M to noon at the East Suffolk Recreation Center. This free event is open to teens ages eleven to seventeen, their parents and any adult who works with youth. Attendees can look forward to interactive sessions on personal development, leadership, mental wellness, social media and more, all designed to help our teens thrive. Registration is required. For more information, call Parks and Recreation at five one four forty-five oh three. Suffolk's National Night Out twenty twenty-five is right around the corner and we'll kick things off with a community event on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at six P M here at City Hall. Neighborhood leaders are invited to attend, learn more about this year's festivities and register their community for the big night with the Suffolk National Night Out Committee. The main event will take place on Tuesday, August fifth. For more details, visit SuffolkNNO.com. And a quick traffic update, West Washington Street between Welland Street and Chestnut Street will be closed from Monday, June twenty-third through Wednesday, June twenty-fifth for essential utility work. Detour signs will be posted to help drivers navigate the work. If you have questions, please reach out to Public Utilities at five one four seven thousand. And finally, as always, you can see on your screen the many ways to stay in touch and connected with everything happening here in Suffolk. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franklin. We'll now move on to announcements and comments by city council. We're going to start with Councilmember Butler Barlow. Let me get the delegates. Bam, there we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm surprised that we did eleven public hearings and it's only, only eight o'clock, but I'm thankful. Appreciate everybody's input tonight. Appreciate the staff for having us all well-prepared for the thick book of business that we had tonight. I want to say a couple of things. Welcome to Lisa, our new downtown development director. I had an opportunity to meet her last Wednesday and know we're all excited for her to be on board and look forward to the things that she'll accomplish with our downtown advisory committee. I want to talk a little bit about, well, I want to also say, attended the Greater Oakland Truck Talk Civic League meeting and they're in full national night out planning mode and it's going to be a great event and everybody's excited and looking forward to it. It's going to be back at the fire station this year for anybody that's interested, so. But looking forward to helping them out, getting that event going. I want to talk for just a second about land use issues. I'm very pleased that we have strengthened our ordinance on solar facilities. It's been a learning curve, as we have said, and I think from the time I've been on council, not that we weren't prepared, but this was something new and different and I appreciate the city's response. It takes a long time to get things right, but I'm very pleased that we seem to be getting this one updated and continue to make adjustments so that it is the best thing for our community. The reason I bring that up is because we have, there was a vote last night in Chesapeake denying a rezoning for a data center. I think that's going to be one of our next challenges and I think right behind that is going to be battery storage facilities. And both of these have a lot of similarities to solar projects. They eat up a lot of land and they create some issues for the community. And I hope that we will, and I have had this conversation with staff, having a robust and effective solar ordinance in place is going to help us as we meet the challenge of these other land use competitions that are coming into our city. And speaking of competition, of course, it's competing for agricultural land, which is a valuable commodity and something that we're not making any more of. Just a reminder to everybody to be safe on the roads and encouragement to everyone, we got all the rain we need and now we need sunshine. I think we're going to get hot weather and plenty of heat and humidity and I know we all don't like it, but the crops sure do, so bear with us as we try to make a good crop this year. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you, I'll be very brief tonight. I'd just like to have a couple of comments on, I did attend the small business appreciation yesterday and call shelves from Suffolk, was it Ward, winner of Suffolk and they're celebrating a hundred and six years of business here in the City of Suffolk and I want to just thank them and congratulate them on the hundred and six years of service here to the citizens of Suffolk and the surrounding areas. We have quite a bit going on this week about Juneteenth, a lot of different activities going on and I think it's very important that we get out and be able to participate and see what it's all about, what Juneteenth is all about and hit some history on, on the Juneteenth. So I'm looking for tomorrow night, I'll be at Eastern Baptist Church at six thirty. Then you have it again at the park here Saturday afternoon, so it's a lot going on in the city wherein the people can participate. Also, I would like to just remind all of us that the schools are out there, a lot of cheering and walking and, you know, out. And I know Parks and Rec is giving a lot of activities for them to do. I hope they will, parents and all, will get them participating in that, keep them busy rather than they get in trouble. So, you know, and I can't say this as a kid, because I don't think it is, all kids, but I see a lot of times on Nextdoor Neighbor, Nextdoor app where people are steadily going in cars and people are leaving their cars unlocked and whatnot. I think people should really pay close attention to their vehicles when they get out of them, make sure it's locked and try to keep people, keep your property safe. And with that, I would say good evening.
Councilmember Johnson?
And I'll keep it very brief as well. First off, I'd like to welcome Lisa Bleakley. I was fortunate enough to meet her the other day and look forward to what she's going to bring to our downtown. And keeping in mind that we have a wonderful group down here trying to help us bring our downtown back and we all need to be behind them a hundred percent. Thanks to police, thanks to fire, thanks to staff, thanks to the public works. It's been a week with the roads and, and, and cars running up and down the roads, it's just been a really busy week and we really appreciate it. We're very blessed in our city to have that. I went to a luncheon today for crisis to action around I went to a luncheon today for Crisis to Action Roundtable for Child Care Solutions, and that's why I said earlier that we need childcare downtown, we need childcare. We need childcare all over the state, but it is getting to the critical level where we, as a city, it needs to be part of what we do and part of what we talk about on a regular basis, to encourage it in our city and to encourage it for the young people to move here, particularly for all the new people moving into our town. Childcare is critical, and I think we can really do a lot more than what we did. It was an exciting program today, and I learned a great deal, so we'll look forward to talking about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and I just want to take this opportunity to remember friends and loved ones who have lost their lives due to gun violence. A few Saturdays ago, I had the opportunity to attend a Pet Palooza at the Harborview Homeowners Association, and I'll tell you, our police and fire department stole the show with our four-legged first responders, so we have some really talented and compassionate four-legged responders, and if you haven't had an opportunity to see them demonstrate how they keep us safe, I'll tell you, you don't ever want to be on the other end of that. When those dogs latch on, it's something fierce. I also had an opportunity of joining the public works team last week, and this is going to sound crazy, but I had the time of my life riding one of our trash trucks. So I had the opportunity to ride the automated trash truck, and I even lifted the lever and picked up a trash can and dumped the trash, and then we rode behind one of the manual trucks, but I declined to ride on the back of that because of the trash juice that splashes. So, but I wanted to thank our public works team for the work that they do, because keeping the trash, picking up the trash, the refuse throughout our community, it is a heavy lift, and I don't know what we would do if we didn't have our team to do that. I also want to take this opportunity, I got the opportunity to spend some time with Director Robert Lewis, outstanding man, and this is going to be the last City Council meeting before he retires, so I just wanted to wish him a happy retirement. I also had the opportunity this weekend to check out a Bennett's Creek Little League District Tournament game. It was hosted at Wilson Little League in Portsmouth, and in the first inning, our boys and girls, well, it was our boys team, 8 to 10, they had a triple in three runs, and so I screamed, I yelled, I was so proud, but I'm proud of the work that the Bennett's Creek Little League organization is doing to just help cultivate young men and teach them, and young students to teach them sportsmanship. The last thing I want to say is, I want to thank our planning department. We have come a long way, and what I want to say is oftentimes people complain about the work and some of the decisions that are made, but our planning department is listening, and I just want to say thank you, especially to Ms. Meg tonight, she seems like she stood the watch as Kevin was out today, but I just want to say thank you, because our citizens, they come up, they speak, and we're listening, and I'm so proud, very proud, to be a part of the change. I want to thank everyone who did speak during our public hearings, and especially to the Alexanders, keep coming, keep talking, keep advocating, but because of your advocacy, we were able to listen, and we were able to implement the changes that needed to be done. I'll end with this. Each of these moments reminds me why public service matters. It's about listening, showing up, and working alongside others to make Suffolk the best it can be. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off by going back to the conditional use permit that we approved for the Adult Daycare Center, and I just want to make a couple of points very clear. The first point is, I have no objections to adult daycare centers, and I certainly don't have any objections to the applicants who put forth that conditional use permit. I very much appreciate the investment that they have made in their businesses in downtown. Going back to the Adult Daycare Center, you know, it was not that many months ago that we approved one out on West Washington Street inside the mall, and it, to me, is an example of how one vote doesn't necessarily set a precedent for another vote. That was, you know, obviously, it was a completely different set of circumstances. The Adult Daycare Center was being proposed in a different location, and that applicant had access, ready access to the back of that building where their clients could pull right up almost to the door and walk into a, through a sheltered building into their facility. And what I'm going to say finally about that is, one of the things that I genuinely appreciate about my fellow members of council is that we are able to not agree with each other, but we can do it in a very agreeable fashion. And I just want to say, I do consider it part of our purview to be able to consider the safety of any applicant, clients that might be using a facility, because it may not necessarily fall under the purview of the planning department to look at it, it may not necessarily fit into a box of one of our UDO requirements, but I do feel like as a city councilman, I can take a little bit of initiative and try to be concerned about the safety of the clients, and I respect your opinion, and I wish, now that that CUP has been approved, I wish those applicants nothing but, nothing but success. That having been said, I'll go back, I went to the Great Dismal Swamp Board Meeting that was held at the Bennett's Creek Recreational Center a few weeks ago. I think some of the exciting stuff is going to come out of that. They've got a group that is working on sort of making Suffolk the spearheaded locality for entrance into the Great Dismal Swamp for the activities that go on there, and they want to partner with our Parks and Rec Department and our Department of Tourism to try to promote that. I think the Great Dismal Swamp is a great asset to this city, and I look forward to the opportunity to be able to capitalize on that great natural resource that we have. I got an opportunity to, at the last Downtown Advisory Committee meeting, to meet Ms. Bleakley, Lisa Bleakley, our new downtown business advisor. I think she's going to be a great asset. I think she's going to bring a lot of enthusiasm and perhaps a fresh way of looking at a lot of the activities that we have ongoing downtown, so I wish her nothing but the best. Chief Bowie, congratulations on your badge-pinning ceremony, to have 10 new officers get badges pinned on them. I guess we're getting closer and closer to being fully staffed. I know that, you know, retirements and attrition from other sources deplete the ranks. When I was at the Kingsbury Civic League last meeting last night, I want to thank your officers for being there and doing a presentation to it, but that was followed up by a presentation by a member of the Fire Department. And she was very envious of the recruitment website and the efforts that you guys put into recruitment, and it seems to be paying great dividends, so certainly keep up, keep up the good work. To the folks in my neighborhood on South Broad Street, I live right around the corner from you on Pennsylvania Avenue, I see this all the time, we're going to work even harder on trying to mitigate the flooding that occurs in the 400 block of South Broad Street after a tremendous rainstorm like we had over the weekend. As I explained to the lady that sent the email, some of the property and some of the issues actually are on railroad property, but we're going to do our best to try to get in there and try to get that cleaned up. There is a good ditch back there, but unfortunately, there's a lot of debris in the ditch that we need to figure out a way to somehow get out. I want to thank the management of, and the directors of the Four Kids Organization. They invited me last week to come to the headquarters of Four Kids over there on Poindexter Street in Chesapeake. It is nothing short of amazing is with what the Four Kids Organization has going on. Just their intake office alone, where they receive all the telephone calls from folks that need rent assistance, electric assistance, this assistant, housing assistant, and whatnot. Their efforts and their coalescing of all the available resources that are available to these clients in the region really takes a lot of burden off of the social services for the different localities, and in fact, you know, it probably saves the locality's significant amount of money, and also provides a good central location for people to go to for help. Councilmember Bennett, your church, East End Baptist, had a great community fest last Saturday, the movie that was being shown in the trailer in the parking lot about the Tuskegee Airmen and the WASP Women Air Force Service Patrol or whatever. I learned so much, and thank you very much for, or thank your church for hosting that. I guess that's enough. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all the speakers that came out tonight, and to our amazing city staff. Thank you for a great job. I'm going to be brief. So with that, I'd like to wish everyone a safe Juneteenth holiday, and goodnight.
I'm brief myself, but I want to thank the city for really, the boundaries of Pewsville, like one of the councilmen said, they've been waiting for this for a long time, and I really appreciate that. I would go down that and I'd see, when you go down certain blocks, you'll know where Suffolk or Chesapeake, but I thank them so much for being aware, some of the needs was needed in Pewsville, so thank them again for that. I just want to also, I don't have much to say, me and Councilmember Bennett, we attend full Baptist ministry with Pastor Dallas, so they took a trailer that was going to be destroyed and put it together, and it's amazing what they have done with that trailer and this trailer for the kids. So I think that, like I always had said about Pastor Dallas, he's an asset to this community, he wants to do so much and help and make it Suffolk a better place for everybody. So I thank him again, Pastor Dallas, for doing what you did. I know I couldn't make it, but I made a way of making it, so thank you again for inviting me. I just want to say for the Juneteenth, I'm glad that celebration, most of your party know I love history, I like to talk about history, but I think it's going to be great. Like I said, unfortunately, Pewsville's not having this yet, I was like, I was surprised, but please, you know, participate in all the events we have for Juneteenth. I think you'd be like, when the councilmen say a lot, a lot of things that, some of the things that I didn't know, but, you know, but it's a great, it's a great opportunity to read some of the history that, you know, it wasn't taught or we didn't know now. But anyway, thank you so much, and what I'll say, God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. We'll go ahead and wrap it up here before we go home. Number one, I want to thank everyone for council and staff, and I appreciate what we were able to accomplish tonight with the number of public hearings and motions and everything else we had going on. You know, our work session was very productive, the ordinances that were passed addressing solar and truck parking were just huge, and our efforts to continue to make recommendations and manage our city in such a way that benefits our citizens, enables us to do business and do what we need to do, and have a minimal effect on anyone's quality of life, and I appreciate everything, once again, that staff and every member of this council contributed to making that happen. I attended the Hampton Roads Community Action Program in Hampton, and Councilmember Bennett was there also. Janet Days was recognized as a community builder, one of only, I think, five individuals recognized in Hampton Roads with the Community Builders Award for her efforts and dedication to improving the quality of lives of others in our community and around Hampton Roads. The Police Department badge-pinning has been mentioned, I mean, 10 new officers is getting us very close to where we need to be as far as being one of the few forces that is going to be fully staffed or close to it, and hopefully, I understand, we've got about 20 in the academy right now, so if that's fairly successful, we will probably be as close as we've ever been in the last eight to 10 years, if I had to take a guess, on where we're going to be on staffing. So that's just exceptional, it's indicative of where we are as a city, it's indicative of where we are as a police force. And once again, National Night coming out, those type of efforts are why we are where we are. I appreciate all the efforts there from our department, as well as our citizens, city management included. I attended the first Western Tidewater Behavioral Docket graduation, along with the manager and Deputy Manager Felder was there, a few other folks. I wasn't expecting much, but there was a lot of enthusiasm in that courtroom. I mean, it was almost just about a capacity. The Judge Nicole Belote, I think is how you pronounce her last name, kind of heads up those efforts, and it was pretty amazing. Like I said, it was only one individual right then, but that program, along with the drug program, saves a lot of time and resources and kind of, hopefully slows down the revolving door of people, you know, being incarcerated, go back out into society, and they go right back through the same door again. So I want to commend them and everything they were doing, and they were very, very, very grateful for the support that the city has offered. So I just wanted to pass that along. That following Sunday, I just got to mention, you know, my friend Pastor Anthony Van Dyke had the ribbon cutting for his relocated, remodeled, refurbished church on Route 10, the New Community Christian Center, and he's just done an outstanding job, and he is, you know, yes, it's a place of worship, but he is, he is really, his mission is to make it a facility that's going to serve the citizens of Suffolk, specifically the citizens in Chuckettuck, and work with the youth, and I see what he's already done with the limited facilities he had and limited resources he has, so I wish him all the best, and moving forward, he is going to continue to be a huge asset for our city, and once again, that's what makes our city great. It ain't all the other stuff, it's the people that live here, it's our citizens. I attended the Small Business Awards along with Councilman Bennett, Councilman Rector, unfortunately, Councilman Rector and I couldn't wait as long as we needed to for the Suffolk Awards, but I do want to congratulate Shadle Sheep Metal Works for being recognized in Suffolk and for their over 100 years of being in business in our city. I met Lisa Bleakley at the Downtown Advisory Board Meeting Wednesday. She brings, I think she brings a great background, a great skill set, and a wealth of knowledge, and she's very receptive to getting on board to see what's really going on in our city, and it'll be another big plus as we move forward to the development of downtown. And with that, I will move to my quote of the night. My quote of the night is from President Teddy Roosevelt. It's a little long, but bear with me, it's a couple of sentences, and that is, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, and strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Wright.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn, and Councilmember Wright, Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none? This meeting, oh, prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.